I invite the officials to come in because we have a tight schedule. We only have one hour.
Nine thirty, I can't see it. Okay, I know. Mr Wong Kwok-hing, he's waving. You need to talk to your family, brother. You need to talk to your family first. Good morning. Why is everyone so quiet? Is it because of the birthday? Good morning, good morning. Good morning, good morning, good morning, everyone. Good morning, good morning.
Today we have Secretary for Labour and Welfare, Mr Matthew Cheung. Secretary for Home Affairs, Mr Tsaung Tak-sing. Ms Florence Hui, Under-Secretary for Home Affairs. Ms Annie Tang, Permanent Secretary for Labour and Welfare. And Mr Patrick Knip, Director of Social Welfare, as well as Ms Grace Foo, Deputy Secretary for Home Affairs. And Ms Aubrey Feng, Principal Assistant Secretary for Home Affairs. Mr Cheung, would you like to speak as well? I have a script. So, Mr Cheung first, and then Mr Cheung, thank you. Madam Chairman, members, good morning. I highlight some of the contents of the policy address in relation to poverty alleviation and care for the elderly. First of all, members are concerned about poverty alleviation. We would like to set a poverty line within this year. That's for certain. That's our first and foremost task. The Chief Secretary of Administration, as well as the Chief Executive, have repeated our concern in the past few days. As for the poverty line, this term of the SARJ will be courageous, committed, and determined to handle well the poverty issue. But of course, you have to give us time, because there's a process that cannot be done overnight or immediately. The poverty line will be an important step forward, and it will be a milestone. For poverty alleviation, as we said, we would like to use the poverty line to measure where the poverty group is, so that we can formulate measures to solve their problems and ease their plight. And to measure whether or not our initiatives are appropriate and effective or not. Besides, in the Commission for Poverty, members are very concerned about social security and retirement protection. And we have a platform to handle your concerns. For social security, for example, society has raised a number of concerns and comments about the CSSA scheme. We understand your starting point will definitely examine in detail and carefully these suggestions. In particular, for social security systems, they will impact hugely on public finance. So we have to be very careful. We keep an open attitude. We would like to have more interaction and listen more to your views, so that we'll see the way ahead. There are some simple examples to address your concerns about allowing people with loss of one limb to apply for disability allowance, DA. The task group on social security will work on this. And our bureau has an interdepartmental working group on this as well. And will report to the task group and seek advice and guidelines. And you understand our intention. For retirement protection, we'll seriously consider the issue. The major direction is to reinforce and enhance the three pillars in our system. That is, the MPF, voluntary personal savings, a non-contributory social security system, including CSSA, OH allowance, and disability allowance. We'll be pragmatic, cautious, and open in examining in depth the issue of retirement protection. We hope that society at large and the local will form a consensus to see what's the way ahead. Care for the elderly is also our major initiative. Our population is aging rapidly, so we have to prepare for that and do preparation. And in this term, we'll fully promote measures and new initiatives. For aging in place, our policy direction is aging in place as the core institutional care is backed up. We all know that that's our direction. We have to enhance community care. At present, I admit that is not enough. We must catch up rapidly, so we must work on that. And this year, we'll have new initiatives. In September, the Social Welfare Department will start a pilot scheme on community care services voucher for the elderly. In eight designated districts, we'll distribute not more than 1,200 vouchers. The pilot scheme is to allow the elders to flexibly choose their community care services. This is to fully manifest the concept of money follows the user. It's a brand-new concept. It will encourage different types of voluntary agencies, including social enterprises, to implement diversified community care services and to increase job opportunities, particularly in terms of elderly care. I have to emphasize that while launching this pilot scheme, we'll not reduce the regular commitment to community care. That is, we'll enhance our conventional subsidized daycare places as well as residential care homes for the elderly. We just want to conduct a test under the pilot scheme. We'll also try as far as possible to increase the number of daycare places and extend the service hours. Some services stop at 8:00 PM. Some elders would like to lengthen that, to see whether hours could be lengthened. So in some new centers, we're trying that out. And a newly opened Tongma Group of Hospital center is operating even on Saturdays and Sundays. And of course, that's a self-financing center. But that's a major cultural change that is worthy of our commendation. As for residential care, we understand that there's huge demand for residential care places, and the waiting time is long. So by short, medium, and long-term measures, we're going to increase the number of residential places. From now to 2014-15, the SWD will provide an additional 1,700 odd subsidized places. And in eleven development projects, we've reserved space for constructing new contract homes. And once there's a new project, we'll strive for reserved space for residential care development. We understand that many elders would like to retire in Guangdong. So what about planning? What is the way ahead? This year, we'll have new initiatives. They will mature. There's this Guangdong scheme. We understand that the OAA can be received by elders in Guangdong. They don't need to come back to Hong Kong to report to us. They can stay in Guangdong for a prolonged period of time. I hope that by September, that is the second or third quarters, we'll fully implement the Guangdong scheme. And then, in April, we know that the OH living allowance will be launched formally in April. After the OALA has been implemented for some time, and the Guangdong scheme is implemented for quite some time, if some elders choose to retire in Guangdong, we'll consider letting these elders to receive the OALA in Guangdong. This is a new concept. That is, if necessary, if elders want to retire in Guangdong, we will give them a choice. That's diversification. And then, there's huge coverage in the policy address, but may not have been noted by the public or the media. That is about the persons with disabilities, PWD. There's quite a bit of coverage on them, and we're concerned about their welfare. Now, here, I'd particularly like to mention the United Nations Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. After the implementation of the convention, Hong Kong has to carry out the convention, enhance our services, and attach importance to the rights of PWDs. We'll enhance coordination and we'll review the Commissioner for Rehabilitation's ranking. The United Nations did say that we should consider that. And your concerns in the panel will be worked upon. You're very concerned about this issue. Secondly, we'll increase the day and residential care services places. At present, the waiting time for daycare services and residential services is rather long for different groups of users. We'll increase the number of places, not just to help the PWDs, but their family members and their carers. Behind the PWDs, family members and carers are under huge pressure. And we'll continue with our timetable to strive for more residential places. There are two important projects coming forth. First of all, in the new territories, in the former site of Suelan Hospital in Tunmun, and in the former Kaian Shouted Workshop and Hostel, we have two vacated sites, which we have obtained already. We're now studying in depth these two sites in the hope that as soon as possible, we can redevelop them into comprehensive complexes. In particular, the Suelan Hospital in Tunmun. If the feasibility study can be completed early next year... Well, it will be done. The question is how many places and how much services can be provided. So, the question is how many places? We hope that we can provide 1,120 residential places and 300 to 400 daycare places. For the Kun Tong one, we'll have 300 residential places and a few hundred daycare places. So, residential 1,400 odd, daycare 500 odd, so altogether 2,000 places. That will be very helpful in easing the demand for services. That means we're highly concerned about such services. And most importantly, some very serious... Some persons with severe disabilities are waiting to be hospitalized. For the three-year pilot scheme launched in March 2011, we'd like to enhance home care. After the completion of the pilot scheme, it will be fully regularized. That's number one. Secondly, it will be extended to all districts in Hong Kong and not be confined to the pilot districts. Thirdly, even if you're not waiting for services, I emphasize that these are for persons with severe disabilities who need serious care services. Home-based care services will be provided to them fully. And 3,000 persons with severe disabilities will benefit. In future, they won't travel far to obtain services. And family members and carers will get very great support. We'll enhance our placement services for PWDs. The SWD has the Sunny Way on the Job Training Program and will enhance the wage subsidy by 50% from $2,000 to $3,000. The Labor Department can let PWDs have $5,500 per month for two months for trying out their jobs, in the hope that they can be permanently employed. And transport-wise, we'll enhance the rehab bus service, give them more resources to help the PWDs. For barrier-free access, we understand that we'll continue with that. But 3,000 odd, 90% have been completed, and we'll continue to do that. For social welfare planning, I'd like to say something about it. You're very concerned about this. You raise this every now and then. This term of the SARJ, we'll do something. For land planning, in particular, the welfare sector is concerned about sites and premises. We're keeping closely reason with departments concerned to identify suitable sites for the provision of welfare facilities. At the same time, for new projects, as I said, space will be reserved for welfare purposes. Another thing that's more important is that we'll take the initiative. SWD will contact welfare agencies and NGOs to see whether they have vacated sites. If they are to have refurbishment, conversion, or redevelopment projects, we hope that they can do more in situ to provide more diversified services and flexibly make use of the lottery's money to match their redevelopment projects. Manpower-wise, we'll collaborate with bureaus concerned in the hope that more training opportunities can be provided to ease the manpower shortage in the sector. And then, I'd like to say something about the eligibility of public transport fare concession scheme for the elderly. We'd like to extend the scheme as soon as possible to eligible children aged below 12, so that they will enjoy the concessionary fare of $2 per trip for the MTR, and starting from March, franchised buses and ferries as well.
Thank you, Secretary. We've already got ten members lined up to ask you questions. May I give the floor to the Secretary for Home Affairs? Please, preface on your main areas of concern. The family, social enterprises, and women's affairs. Please be succinct. I thank you. We are concerned about policy initiatives related to the family and social enterprises. The family is the cornerstone of our society. Administration has set up a family council with representatives from different departments and members of the public, with the Secretariat of the Home Affairs Department Bureau as the Secretariat. Acting on the recommendations of the Family Council to create a family-friendly environment, a pro-family society, starting from the 1st of April this year, all government bureaus and departments have to assess family implications and consider new initiatives and policies from family perspectives. We encourage bureaus and departments to consult the Family Council on matters that may affect... that may have family implications. To implement the new initiatives and to strengthen the advisory role, the Family Council will be reconstituted under new non-official chairman with effect from April this year. And we'll continue to work on research on family and also to promote family values. We will launch the Second Family Friendly Employees Award Scheme this year. And the Family Council invites universities and tertiary institutions to conduct researches and surveys, and to look at various policy initiatives to support the family. As for social enterprises, in the past few years, we have seen very encouraging development on this front. And their business operation and social objectives are more and more diversified. And they also provide job opportunities for the disadvantaged and services to them. We will continue to provide seed grants to eligible organizations for setting up SEs under the Enhancing Self-Reliance Through Partnership Scheme. And we will also launch the Social Press Mentorship Award Scheme this year. And we will continue to sponsor training courses at the management and practical levels with a view to building up a talent pool for SEs in Hong Kong. Through the Hong Kong SE Challenge Business Writing Competition, we will promote the spirit of entrepreneurship to our young people. We have already set up the Task Force on Social Innovation and Enterprises Development Fund under the Poverty Commission. And the SHB, the Home Affairs Bureau, is one of the members. It will continue to work with the Task Force to help SEs to grow healthily. Thank you. All right, we'll start the question time. Three minutes each for question and answers. And if there isn't time to take all the questions, we'll invite the secretaries to provide written answers. All right, I will be very strict with the timeframe, because we still have to discuss the setting up of the subcommittee to tackle family violence. Mr Wong Kwok-hing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In APAR 109 of CY's policy address, he said that he may consider allowing persons of lost one limb to apply for disability allowance. And the LWB said that he would set up a task force to study that. CY said that he would conduct a study, and I mean, CY said that would be possible. And the secretary said that he would only study this year. So in fact, the study ended last year. So you asked the task force to study this issue again to make recommendations to the Commission on Poverty. So how much longer do they have to wait? Because for such persons, their neck is becoming handicapped because they have been waiting far too long for the DA. So, I'd like to ask the Secretary, when the study can be completed? And when will you start allowing persons who have lost just one limb to get DA? So that they don't have to wait for so long, Secretary?
Well, the Welfare Services Panel, well, has always discussed this issue, as members know. Members may recall that the Ambassador had some judicial reviews involving this matter. So you may have the impression that we have dragged off here for a few years. But in fact, it's because of the JR of the Ambassador. Ms Tam, the PS will chair an interdepartmental group to look at this from a higher level. However, we're waiting for the task force from Social Security and Social Welfare to give a report, and then we will start at once. But there are a number of complicated issues involved. It's not just about losing one limb. Now, if we selectively overDA to a person who have lost one limb, what about some hidden handicaps? What about those who are suffering from mental retardation? So please don't give us so many reasons, but tell us the timeframe. When can it start? Will you only allow the granting of DA after four years? Well, I'm confident. Well, let's give time to the task force to give a report to the Poverty Commission on Poverty first. We're aware of your concern. We'll deal with that as soon as possible. Well, we have to wait until CY starts its second term. We will do it as soon as possible. Dr Fernando Cheung?
This is the first PA of CYLE. Of course, we have expectations. But on the social welfare front, we are very disappointed. We've never seen welfare planning that bad. You look at the few paragraphs in the PA on planning for social welfare. There's no planning at all, no policy review, no statistics, no commitment. So what kind of planning you talk about? You talk about land and manpower, of course, we all know that. And according to the secretary, there will be 1,700 RCHs places. You've talked about that for more than two years. Twenty-eight thousand elderly persons are waiting for a place. And on average, 5,000 pass away while waiting for a seat, a place. So 1,700. And then you talked about Siuna and Kaianang. Kaianang has been vacated for almost 10 years. So what's the point? 2,000 places, but there are over 7,000 waiting for a place. So when will the 2,000 places appear? People suffering from severe mental retardation, they've been waiting for more than 10 years. Services for children with disabilities, 6,800 waiting for services. They have to wait for one to three years. And some for those aged between zero and two. By the time they are served, they have already grown beyond that age. So even for cases with immediate crisis, they have to wait for three months. So this is outrageous. You have not considered the actual situation and the service shortage. You say that you'll launch one initiative when it is ready. So we women can have... we have these 2,000 places. How can you tackle the problem, Secretary? When will you do the planning properly? When will you have real planning, Secretary?
Regarding aging in the community and at home, we will strengthen all kinds of community support services. We have such heavy demand for RCHs because there aren't sufficient community care services. So all elderly persons would be on the waiting list regardless. So if we have a better CCS that would change the situation, Secretary?
All right, aging at home. Well, daycare services, community care services would include both daycare services and home services. Can you tell us the supply and demand situation for the coming five years? The waiting is so long. So, Secretary, please give us a written reply. Mr Ronny Tong?
Dr Fernando Cheung made a very good point. If you look at the policy address, there are more paragraphs on things CY is not going to do than those he is going to do. And the only thing we have is the poverty line, which the community has been asking for a long time, and still, it's just a study. Secretary, do you have a timetable for that? How long is that study going to take? And the poverty line cannot resolve all the problems. It's just a standard. The proxy of the problem is, after you have the poverty line, how are you going to deal with issues involving persons below the poverty line? All right, and retirement, protection, three paragraphs. I'm not going to do anything about that. And the Community Care Fund, when it was first set up... Well, I think you understand that Dr Don Lo曾 asked the business sector to donate to the CCF, and according to news reports, many of the donations were aborted. So, is it true that the government is not going to alleviate poverty? You're going to shift responsibility to CCF? If yes, will the CCF be depleted? Will you have another round of efforts to ask for more injection into the fund? If CCF cannot tackle all problems, what will the government undertake to help the poor?
Well, can undertake that the poverty line will be set up by the end of 2013? That is this year. Mr Cheung, you're correct in saying that the line will not help us to solve the problem. It will just help us to target the users and to have specific measures to help and to ensure that our measures are relevant. But we will not wait for the poverty line to be set up. We will not sit on our hand. I think you know what are the problems. As I said, the poverty line will be done within this year. After you have the poverty line, how can you make use of that to help people living below the poverty line? As I said, we have to know where they are, and then we have specific measures or projects or policies to help them to satisfy their needs. As for the CCF, have we shifted our responsibility to the CCF? Well, it is under Mr Cheung's portfolio. But the CCF operates as a task force, is one out of the six. Now, CCF is not for long-term initiatives. It is to make up for the shortcomings of our social security system. Secretary?
I think you have to include this in your written reply. Yes, he fails to answer your question. Looked it. Mr Wong Kwok-hong? He's not here? Meet Mr John Kwok-chiu.
Madam Chairman, I agree with Dr Fernando Cheung that the social welfare planning mentioned in the policy address is not what's in our mind. We'd like a comprehensive planning. We're not talking about people, subsidy, et cetera. We're talking about mutual matching among the different types of... We're talking about mutual matching among the different types of services and schemes. And we'd like to address the aging problem of the poor. So we need overall planning. We don't want makeshift measures. And just now, the secretary said that community care services would be launched without reducing existing services. Of course, because this is a pilot scheme. Secondly, it's a co-payment scheme. For those who cannot afford it, we still have to take care of them. It's not just daycare. We need community care as well as enhanced residential care and home care services. Thirdly, the Bureau has to address another issue. From now to twenty fourteen fifteen, you will have an additional one thousand seven hundred odd subsidized places. How many bought places? How many new subvented places in various districts? You mentioned eleven new ones. How are they distributed among the various districts? And then for the auxiliary paramedical personnel, frontliners are really in acute shortage. We agree. However, how are you going to solve the problem? You did something on the paramedicals, but what about the frontliners who are non-professionals? I hope that the department will immediately start a discussion with the sector. As for women, I see, well, in fact, I hope that you will enhance after-school care and extend the service to seven P M or eight P M. And I'm talking about a comprehensive enhancement so that we can release women workforce into the market. Women are concerned about how their children will be taken care of. As for welfare, zero tolerance for family violence, we agree. As for the three-pronged approach, there's not much mention about it. We don't want slogans. We want to know what new measures and new resources there will be to allow you to adopt a three-pronged approach for zero tolerance. And for paragraph nineteen about welfare, well, time's up. Secretary, please give us a written reply comprehensively. Next, Mr. Chan Chi Chuen.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to ask about support for young people. In the policy address, I tried to find out the major direction and improvements in that regard. But for social welfare planning, in paragraph one-one-nine, something is mentioned about it. And then I look forward to this policy initiative's paper. But nothing is new. In the policy address, very often, old stuff I mentioned. Three thousand jobs, for example, which will be extended for twelve months. After that, no more. So no new initiatives. Whether or not the scheme is successful, is a failure, there's nothing new. So it will be extended for another twelve months so that it will end on its own. As for support for young people, no new policies, no new initiatives. My feeling is that for the problematic youths, the high-risk youths, youth gangs, et cetera, only very few is mentioned about these issues. You're thinking in the way of the nineteen eighties. The not-so-hit topics were dropped. No new initiatives for the future. So Bureau, can you tell us something that is not mentioned in the policy address?
Well, I say something first, the director can supplement if necessary. Well, very simple. The policy address and my paper map out what the S W D did in the past. Three thousand temporary jobs were created for young people to prepare them for future jobs. Please give us more time so that the government can prepare them for entering the job market. So the three thousand odd jobs are very important to equip them to enter the job market. That's a very important decision. You ask, what have we done? We're very concerned about them, in particular, the hidden youths. In Chang'an O in Manshan, we had new outreach teams. Well, I cannot count to everything because of the coverage of the paper. For example, we have services, outreach services for the night youths. And we have outreach services with seventeen million dollars for them to trace the hidden problematic youths on the internet. So on various funds, Mr. Chan, we are doing something. So maybe the director can supplement. For the new outreach teams, they'll adopt a new approach. That is, the day outreach and night outreach teams are run by the same service provider in the hope that those young people who need the service can be assisted. Mr. Eleanor, Madam Chairman, it's very correct to call C Y L E M an expert liar. Well, he always says that he is going to do something pragmatic, something real. I really can't see how that's done. In the policy address, the part on welfare does not carry anything that is concrete. During the election, C Y L E M compared himself to Henry Tang and depicted himself as very concerned about the disadvantaged and the grassroots. Well, obviously, after the election, he forgot everything. Madam Chairman, I'd particularly like to follow up on the poverty line. Recently, we heard Mrs. Carrie Lam and the secretary said that they'll be talking about relative poverty, maybe not fifty percent of the median wage. Well, my understanding of the concept of poverty line is really a percentage. So I'd like to listen to the secretary more. And just now, Mr. Ronny Tong said that it's good to have a poverty line. But have you considered having objective criteria and objectives? For example, every year you reduce the number of people below the poverty line by how much? If you don't have objectives, we cannot monitor you. And this time, you don't even have policy platforms. So I really don't know how to monitor you, Secretary. Madam Chairman, I'd like to reiterate that the emphasis of this term of the government is to assist the disadvantaged. And poverty alleviation and care for the elderly are also our major concerns. So don't be suspicious about the policy address. It's because that we have a high degree of transparency, we're committed and have political courage that we want to set a poverty line. Once we've given the undertaking, we have to do our homework. What do we need? We have to be more focused to see what policies and initiatives will be able to assist them to ease poverty and reduce the number of poor people. Well, when the working group and task force start working, that is, when the task force starts working, discussion on the poverty line will be started. There's so many views in society. For certain, within this year, a poverty line will be set. We're confident that we'll be able to do that. Once the line is set, objectives, how we can assist the poor as far as possible will be gradually rolled out. Next, Mr. Albert Oh. Madam Chairman, the government says that it is now willing to set a poverty line. Compared with the past, this is an improvement. However, if you look at this so-called plan, I'm really not that confident. We have to understand that it will take a year for them to set a line. And then after setting the line, what will be done? Apparently, not much has been mentioned. We all understand that as far as poverty line is concerned, many overseas institutions as well as local institutions have got their proposals. For example, half of the median wage or sixty percent. So what line do you want to draw? Why is it that under such a circumstance, you still need a year to set the line? And then after the study, what will you do? Don't just tell us who are the poor people. To define who the poor people are and setting a poverty line are two different things. There are two different things here. Poverty line is for you to quantify the need by setting an objective. If you don't have a quantitative indicator, it's not meaningful. So at the end of the exercise, can you tell us any indicators for alleviating poverty? And Mr. Henry Tang did say that the more alleviation, the poorer the people become. So don't play figure games. Don't set the line very, very low. And then you use the poverty line to eradicate the poor population. Secondly, with figures, if you can't tell us your commitment, then I really don't know what commitment you have for these poor people living under the poverty line. Dr. Fernando Zheng was very correct. You always say aging at home. If people choose to age at home, how much time will you need to provide all the matching services? And how can you reduce the number of people who have to age in residential care homes? Secretary, well, time is tight. Let me say something. The poverty line is to be set by the C O P, which does not just comprise officials, but ethical members in all sectors of the community. There's a high degree of transparency. Once the yardstick is set, we'll be able to measure and monitor the situation. But it's absolutely not meaning that we're not going to do anything before the poverty line is set. We have the disabled elders, we have the ethnic minorities, et cetera, et cetera. We have to follow up on all of them. So after setting the poverty line, we'll see the way ahead. There'll be collaborative effort. Tang Kapi is not here. Next one is Chan Yin Han. We still have four to five members on the list. And we still need another five minutes to discuss domestic violence. Colleagues, can we extend the meeting by ten minutes? Clark, can we do that? Anybody needs this room after this meeting? Members, you can truffle among meetings. From now on, two minutes per member, from myself onwards, all right? We don't have enough time for discussion. I want to ask a number of things. Well, ten paragraphs are about P W Ds. What about barrier-free access? I attended a major activity yesterday. You don't understand the difficulties. For example, doors leading to shopping malls, including those in ethical, the steps leading to shopping malls, restaurants. Well, there's an ordinance to regulate all these. But in actual fact, in reality, there's no barrier-free access for P W Ds on many occasions. So your Bureau and the Home Affairs Bureau should do something. You don't need to answer my question. For the Guangdong scheme, just how the secretary said, that is all right. But some groups are already doing something. After all, what is the government doing? Well, Dong Ma Do on the cruise terminal in Calhoun East, low-carbon facilities are not matching. So what about these ancillary facilities? I want the comprehensive package. You have to talk to the groups, in particular, the concerned groups. As for children, I very much agree with Chan Chi Chuen. Yesterday, I attended a children activity. They told me the demands of the poor students. Very few is mentioned about them here and about cross-generation poverty. How are you going to help those children? It's not enough in the paper. And what about short, medium, long-term social welfare planning, which we asked in the past? Nothing is mentioned here. Well, you should review what had happened since the handover. That is, from the middle of nineteen nineties. Your present attitude is not all right. So please answer my questions.
And next, Ms. Helena Wong, only two minutes. I'm so sorry, Ms. Wong.
Two minutes, I don't know how to ask questions. Let's talk about Family Council. S H A, I would encourage bureaus and departments to consider family perspectives in formulating new policies and that you would publicize the importance of or the core family core values. I'm so worried with the endorsement of C D O. Gender mainstreaming was introduced and focal points have been set up. But in this P A, there is no mention of this subject. There are only two small paragraphs on women's affairs. So it said that you will give up gender mainstreaming, instead you will look at family mainstreaming? And I'd like to know what about the Women's Commission? Women organizations are worried that you're going to replace Women's Commission. But what about family core values? Are you only talk about heterosexual and monogamy? Now, what about diversified families? Well, will you push women to a dead corner to continue to provide free service at home? Then productivity will not be released because you worry that if women join the workforce, there'll be nobody to take care of kids and also the elderly at home.
Chairman of the Women's Commission is a member of the Family Council with no intention to replace the former with the latter. Secretary, please give a written reply. Ms. Mac May Kun.
In Para ninety-eight of the C Y's of the C's policy address, he mentioned lowering the administrative cost of fees of M P F, Para ninety-six to ninety-eight. And there is under the big heading of Retirement Protection and Social Security. But there is no mention of M P F in the S L W's paper. If retirement protection is part of our social protection, why is the secretary silent on that? If retirement protection is a kind of social welfare, shouldn't we abolish the offsetting arrangements of M P F benefits and L S P and severance pay? I think it is the S L W's responsibility because Para ninety-eight is under social security. And in Para thirty-eight of the secretary's paper, he mentioned mental health. And the secretary talked about case management approach. We know that this is not very successful and you haven't been able to meet the targets. So the secretary talked about reorganization. I'd like to know, under the new arrangement, how many experimental patients can be helped to be reintegrated with the community? The C's policy address, Para ninety-eight, is to talk about our three pillars of retirement protection and M P F is one of the three pillars.
Mr. Chairman, Pen.
Thank you. Support for young people and employment protection, there is a little, precious little. Para twenty-six says that the temporary positions with N G Os will be extended. In fact, this is a serious problem. Whether we have hidden youths or youth at risk that gang up together, that is a serious problem. So will the administration promote or extend this scheme? And to start and to help secondary students to start their career planning, will you subsidize N G Os to employ? Will you subsidize NGOs to employ interns? For instance, can organizations be given tax concessions if they employ secondary school kids for summer jobs? Thank you.
There is a lot in the policy address. Well, other than the three thousand temporary jobs which will be extended, there is also the employment, youth employment support scheme. And then the subsidy will be doubled, more than, will be increased by more than fifty percent to three thousand dollars. The purpose is to encourage or to promote job opportunities for young people. I agree entirely that employment for youth employment is important. And, and we have already started a trial scheme in two districts, in Kuifeng and in, in, and also Longhuangfeng. Or at Langkang Place, we have the scheme. Thank you.
Mr. Longkong. I don't think I can say anything in two minutes, so I might as well talk about other things. Siwa Leng has this ultimate trick. Before he was elected, he talked, he's as if everything was easy to be resolved. He said that as soon as he got elected, everything would be resolved. But as soon after his election, he say he is just the opposite. Everything is difficult. Now, why, why do you give me this four ants dumb bell? It would break my back if you ask me to lift it. So he talks about home care services or community services to replace R C H E S. Well, you, you, it's easier, you don't need any land. And if you cannot build R C H E S, then you should offer home services. Why is it so difficult? You don't need land for it. And secondly, retirement protection. You told us that after the approval of the O A L A in April, you will do it. But what about offsetting L S P and S P with M P F benefits? You don't need land for that, for these, the measures I just mentioned. Do you need land? Well, listen, once again, for measures that do not require land, you should implement them as soon as possible because you put blame on identification of land. So you're lying. So tell me, how many of these measures there do not require land? Tell me, please give us a check. Well, aging at home, I think you, a parrot, you, you just repeat what your boss said about land. Mr. Tang Kapiu?
The classification of the P A is strange. Para two-four and Para one-one-nine, the two hundred and six, two, twenty-six hundred young people will see their positions expanded. You regard it as a great welfare measure for these young people. Well, if you really want to consider as a welfare measure, you should extend the positions of all three thousand. But of course, I support your proposal here. And I find the report regrettable. Since you're willing to extend the jobs of twenty-six hundred young people, why can't you renew the contract of the community workers that have worked for you for so many years? They're very experienced, their contract will not be renewed, and they will have to go back to the market. What, what, how can they make use of the expertise, experience? Yes, Mr. Longkong has made a very good point. They're most experienced in applying for C S S A. So they have served youth when they were in their twenties and now they're in their forties. Well, and most of them only received secondary education, the sixty-eight positions. For the temporary jobs for young people was to help them, to equip them with more capability when the market was not well. Of course, if they can be absorbed by these organizations. Well, Mr. Joseph Lee?
Thank you very much, although I'm not a panel member, Madam Chair. There are two interesting points. First, service for mental patients. The P A is silent on this. And there is some mention of it in your paper, secretary. So is mental health under your portfolio or doctor codes? For case managers, they are employed by the H A. And what about rehabilitation of ex-mental patients in the community? Because I'm worried how the F S is going to do it in his budget. And there are no policy agenda for us to refer to this time. Yes, and it's good that you will enhance community care services. And you have a pilot scheme for vouchers, C C S vouchers for people with medium range of handicap. But how do you define that? All right. Mental health? Although there is no mention of it in the P A, but please refer to my annexed continuing services or ongoing initiatives. This is to replace our policy agenda. So Para thirty-eight is relevant. We work very closely with the Health and Food Bureau. We will enhance our efforts. And as for a person with, that are moderately handicapped, we'll talk about elderly persons that are eligible to be admitted to our R C H E S after assessment. Now, if they're assessed that they need nursing homes, well, well, if they're just suffering from medium handicaps and they admitted to infirmaries and for those that are severe, they need nursing homes. All right, we will extend our meeting by ten minutes. We don't have enough time to continue. So secretary, please give overall responses to members' questions. Now, you keep saying conducting a study and to wait, but according to colleagues, these are not new issues. You talk about the problems of children and those faced by ex-mental patients and aging at home and also the poverty line. Even when I was a legal member, we already talked about that. So even if you continue to study these issues, you cannot satisfy us. So two minutes for each secretary, please. New measures cannot be implemented without any study. Yes, the poverty line is something we'll certainly do. We must have a consensus within the commission and in the council first. How, how is it going to operate? We cannot do it naturally. So in a few months, we will work very hard, we are confident that we can have it set within this year. And aging at home, we will enhance our, enhance our services. This is a brand-new idea, using C C S vouchers for the elderly. And we will then offer opportunities for the middle class to purchase the elderly services they need because currently there aren't enough measures for them, there are enough services available in the market. And then we do not hide behind the pretext of studies. Now, we have eleven new sites for building R C H E S. And for instance, Shilang Hospital and Kainan, Shouda's Workshop, well, the sites are already handovered to the L W B.
We'll start work as soon as possible. When the service will start, we hope that one thousand one hundred and fifty residential places can be provided in Shilang, the biggest in Hong Kong, is a site of three hectares. And then we have the Guangdong scheme to target the demands. We fully understand the needs. We'll have a tendering exercise in May, and then we'll announce the tendering document and start immediately. I think thirty thousand elders will benefit from the Guangdong scheme. And then for two hundred and ninety thousand elders, they will receive the first batch of subsidy. Secretary for Home Affairs, only need one minute. For the Family Commission, it's not true that we'll continue to study and study issues. To address Dr. Helena Wong's concern, we're certain that Hong Kong's households are very diversified. So we don't want to have an exclusive definition for the term family. We're sure that our families are very diversified. In law and custom, we all understand what a family is. As for the family core values, the Family Commission has discussed and established a set of criteria which are implemented in society. We have A P Is, et cetera, to publicize the value of fa- the core values of families. Well, one of our colleagues said that you emphasize households and family, but you did not address women problems. Maybe you should give a written reply. Colleagues, our meeting is to end, although I have a guilty feeling. I do not have enough time for you. I hope that all political parties should go back and discuss about this, these issues. Our members have become more concerned about society and more active. I think we should all go back and think about all these. I did discuss with the clerk whether we should just have one hour for these topics. For the welfare services panel, one hour is absolutely not enough. Now, no more discussion. Dr. Fernando Zheng, Madam Chairman, I think we all know that one hour is far, far from enough. Can we put social welfare planning on our agenda? And we should ask the bureau directors to come again. During the last term, we discussed social welfare planning in twenty-eleven. You know that at that time, Donald Zhang partially established a non-official working group and published a report. Mr. Zheng was the bureau director then. Now, social welfare planning is no longer seen at the moment. That's impossible. So Madam Chairman, can we consider that? Yes, I think we should arrange for this topic to be discussed again in March and April. Secretaries, you should consider the social welfare white papers during the British colonial era. They had different parts in their reports. So secretary, it's not this long-term planning you mentioned for social welfare today. You have to face the problems and go back to those reports in the past. Now, in March and April, we should first of all invite the deputations to come. They'll give us a lot of views. But secretaries, you have to provide us with papers in advance. Don't just give us a very short paper. You know that you have to attach importance to our remarks. That is, to the, that is in the interest of your governance. So please go back and think twice about this. Today, I have a guilty feeling I'm not satisfied. Many colleagues are not satisfied with the short time made available to us. So thank you, the two secretaries and officials. Colleagues, last time, Dr. Fernando Zheng moved a motion that under the welfare services panel, we should set up a subcommittee on domestic violence. At the moment, social security-related issues will be discussed in the House Committee. So if we are to set up a subcommittee on domestic violence, assuming that we endorse that today, we have to queue up, but we may not be able to do it this year. So I have to seek your advice. First of all, are we going to set up a subcommittee on domestic violence? And if we cannot start this year, I have a backup idea. It's just like the minimum wage issue. We regularly, in the coming year, put this on our agenda, maybe bi-monthly or monthly. You can decide, members. Dr. Fernando Zheng, what's your suggestion? Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. Last time, we discussed domestic violence. And by the end of that meeting, we had a consensus. Many issues related to domestic violence seem to have been dropped for a number of years. And it's suspicious why the figures had dropped, family incidents. We have tens of thousands of them, but their figures were dropping. So last time, we said that we should queue up first anyway. So last time, it was my suggestion. So Chairman, I hope you can handle that. I hope we can queue up first. As for more urgent issues related to domestic violence, we can put them on the agenda of this panel. I'd like to have members' support. Dr. Helena Wong? I fully support that suggestion. I now have to attend the meeting of the food panel, so please put on record that I support the establishment of the subcommittee. Alice Mac?
Madam Chairman, I also agree that we should set up the subcommittee. But as Dr. Fernando Zheng said, a lot of issues related to domestic violence are very imminent. It's good that we can set up the subcommittee. Even without that subcommittee, we can discuss the issues here. And we should invite deputations to come and discuss domestic violence with us.
All right. My feeling is that there is no objection. I'd like to remind members that Paper four-nine-six bracket zero-three was submitted by the Labor Party in relation to terms of reference and timetable. Any comments, any objection? If not, I'll take it that you agree. We don't need to have a show of hands. Thank you very much. So we'll queue up. As for the concrete details, Deputy Chairman will discuss further. So thank you very much. Sorry.